Okay. Joe, you're running a meeting?
Yeah.
Someone you want to go?
I'm gonna pass that on down.
I say we want to go. What do you think Mike?
Let's do it.
Couple of minutes after. All right, we will commence the finance committee meeting. The main topic today will be three departments giving their budget updates. But before we get into that, I want to just talk a couple of minutes about some developments regarding the bond issue. And we had a, Patrick and I were out yesterday.
I wondered if we should wait on that only because she was a strong interest.
Is Mary Ann coming in?
I would assume so, so I want to do that.
So you want to, if you want?
Why don't we let?
You want to bring the budget stuff first?
Yeah, let's do one of them and then we'll take a break. I mean, if you're scared, we'll do the other.
So we'll start with the budget stuff and then we'll come back to the bond. So we'll start a little bit first with public properties and capital improvement. I put a little summary sheet on before I turn it over to Jerry. So you see there's forty-three employees within public properties. The majority of those are unionized. They have a budget of, the latest budget of three million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. And year-to-date, there's sixty-seven and a half percent spent at seventy-one point five percent. So Jerry, you're looking pretty good. You're not going to have to be coming for any supplement, it looks like.
Thanks, thank the Lord.
This is a department that does generate revenue. The largest component of that is the cable TV fee. But they generate about three point three million in revenue. And the majority of their budget goes towards payroll. And as related to that is the capital improvement, which is also managed by Jerry and Jeff. For the past few years, he's been spending a little over six hundred thousand dollars. This year it's six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which again is only fifty-six percent spent. But they don't be completely spent during the year. There's certainly enough capital needs within the county. And one of the things that these guys are going to do is help to talk about a long-term, three-to-five-year capital plan. The major projects that are, should be on our agenda for the county in terms of future expenditures for capital improvements. And with that, I'll let Jerry take over.
So you kind of said it all, Joe.
Not really.
There is two parts to our budget, the general fund budget and the capital improvement budget. So with the handouts you've got in front of you, you know, as per your instructions, you know, we describe our property. We all know that we basically oversee and maintain county offices and county properties, maintenance requests, building updates, renovations, et cetera. Underlisted several of our goals for our department. Communication to our customers is big for us. A lot of you, we've all met with your request, for your requests for renovations and updates. And we try to then schedule them through our capital improvement program. So it's very important to us to have great communication with the clients. As I mentioned, the capital improvement plan is a little bit sparse the last ten years or so. The request is going to be a little different today. So I don't, I don't expect, no, I do expect a little shock, sticker shock. But it is, it is a request. It is what we would need to do, what we should be doing, which we backed off on it for the last ten years. And that's where it gets us where we're behind. We're behind in maintenance, we're behind in big-ticket items, the big buildings, corrections, health center, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody's got a roof, everybody's got a need for an updated air conditioning or furnace. So we try to, try to do the best we can. As Joe mentioned, the bond project, which we'll get into later, that will be back on this year, the November ballot for 2016. And then another goal is to continue our facilities upgrades to, in our preventive maintenance program. And try to become more efficient when we do replace equipment, so we can capture some energy savings there. And, you know, we try to do as much as we can within the budget, but it's really. So with that, I'll just gloss over the fact that there is an attachment of our organizational H R eight. Here's the, here's the department. I think I've got, honestly, my data on modified, I've got four million seven thousand, you've got three million nine something. It could be the union difference, I don't know. But I got it up here, so that's about what we're at. As Joe mentioned, if you include our revenues, go to the last, the general fund that's needed, funding that's needed from the county is about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars. And with the anticipated fees and revenue from cable, et cetera, bus stations, field club, it amounts to a total of a little over four million. So it's, it's pretty straightforward in the general budget for our department. The only increase is the, which was in the call letter, would be the one point five percent for the salaries. So it's virtually flat, which is what the request was of the finance committee. So I'll, I'll turn this over to Jeff on the capital project. This is, this is a really good benchmark for a five-year plan. If we had all the money, we could take them, we could do it all. It is going to be a little bit of a shock if you follow the twenty-seventeen amount. But it's what we have to request. And we don't have to speculate on what we'll get, but that'll be your decision. But we have to, from a audit standpoint, need to request what we feel we need to keep our buildings.
So basically about nine million dollars there as far as if you jump through two thousand twenty-one.
If we did it all.
Jerry, what's four, this four way, that's four way?
I don't know if it's okay to say something. Jim, when you went here and I told him to delay the bond, they were going to talk about that.
Okay.
But wouldn't this be something, Joe, that you want to have in our bonding, like the screws ahead? If it's necessary and we need to break that down, you know, hey, what are the capital improvements and roofs? Because otherwise we're going to have a serious problem at some point when there's absolutely a necessity for some luxury item. But you've got to do the roof, period, and you've got a million dollars worth of work.
And that, we, we looked at many roofs. There's probably six or seven roofs in there over five years. And they are expensive. There's a lot of mechanical equipment in here for the main facility. If you want to go down west, four oh eight, which is a sub-con building, you own the facility. It's in need of an upgrade for mechanical electrical. And we're trying to renovate it also. Our view is to try essentially on the facility is to try to bring it up to a energy star-rated facility since we are going to maintain it decently properly or whatever. So that's one of our goals for the four oh eight, which is a big ticket item.
As the generator, which building is that?
Dot com.
Next to United Way, back to United Way. Old United.
Six hundred thousand in the generator? If, how many square feet are in that building? Roughly.
How many? About five stories. Thirty-eight thousand square feet.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, a generator normally on a fifty-thousand-foot building will be somewhere close to the two, to the two-forty range. I know when they're putting them in, Cox Cable, for example, puts in the generators in some of their buildings.
We just put one in at the health center four years ago.
Yeah, now that'd be a lot bigger.
Big, seven hundred and fifty feet.
Hey, you may double-check that number.
Well, we will, but.
Close to it.
There's a lot of ventilation, ventilation issue we have to comply with, the current regulations, the new one probably.
And in the last year and a half, they've done some and they've been around that too some. This isn't Jer, this isn't Jerry's uncle that's doing the generating.
I've got a question about, you know, dot com's a joint city-county operation, so is the city contributing any to this capital? Under the dot com interlocal, the city basically takes care of four oh eight and the, no, the county takes care of the four oh eight building and the city takes care of everything in this complex. You know, they have their, all the equipment stuff in the basement of this building that got redone and whatever. And that is, so it's kind of split up that we do the office part and the city pays the cost to maintain the space in this building, which is the equipment.
Department of Corrections, we've talked about that in administration meetings. But I do have roofs on here and air handling units and also some chill water piping that's deteriorating. Those are the big-ticket items.
But, and for corrections, that doesn't include the seven million we've been talking about that would be in the bond?
Some of that would be, I just didn't, I didn't pull it out because I'm not sure if it's kind of.
The moving target.
Right. The next sheet.
So PJ, can I, uh, Mike, can I?
Go ahead.
So what is the total, what is the total with this and what you've got in the bond issue with it? Because that's justified. I mean, so what's the total? What would be the total correction for this?
The bond issue is seven million.
And with all of this stuff here?
And I think.
Including the criminal justice?
In that seven million, if not all.
The criminal justice center's in it?
Seven million for the old part of the facility, primarily plumbing.
So how much more?
The annex.
How much more does it increase with annex?
I don't think the plans were to do the annex.
I'm just saying, the way that, now, yeah, I'm reading through anything, but from the, if it's going to be a criminal justice bond, you might as well see what it costs to put all this in there and the criminal justice center.
That kind of goes back to conversation that Joe was going to briefly later, related to the size of the bond issue. Like I said, ask if.
How much?
C J C building's pretty well okay. I mean, we just put in new boilers last year, Mary's addition boilers or water heaters. So we're pretty well up to date with that facility. So the Department of Corrections is a big facility. We have the old side in the annex and they're nineteen-seventy-six vintage. And that's where we're having a lot of the problem. But this bond, if we, bond passes with the seven million dollars, we can do a lot of the work within that bond money.
Is Graham Busby pulled involved in this at all, anywhere in this? Are you budgeting anything for immediately?
Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry, Jim.
So, you know, kind of following up on Chris's question, if I'm reading this right, you've got thirty million from the bond going into the Fitzgerald home and seven million from the bond going into corrections, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So that's thirty-seven million all in on the bond issue, or is there more?
There's more. Maybe Joe, can Joe talk about what he was going to talk about before?
Just give me a number.
No, no, it's, we don't, I can give you a quick update. I don't have the number yet. And the update is that Patrick and I went out to a meeting, Jerry was there and Jeff too, yesterday. And we met with the people from nine-one-one. And we were talking about the scope of the equipment for nine-one-one and kind of how it's morphing out to now growing. And a significant piece of that would be the radio equipment. That when we threw the number out of two point six million, it was just for the sheriff's office and a couple of the rural or whatever you want to call them, smaller city.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement. But now the scope is potentially increasing fairly significantly on that as where, as there's talk now that it would also encompass the rural fire districts and a significant portion for the Omaha Fire Department and even some additional spending for the Omaha Police Department, which we're still trying to get our arms around this since this was kind of new news and we didn't have real firm numbers on it. But the number, just in the course of the meeting, increased about seven million dollars.
It could go from forty to forty-seven and if, can I throw my?
Sure.
Okay. So the issue is, there's a couple of issues. This was all discussed back in two thousand and fourteen prior to bond issue. Radios were not included. At that time, the thought was each jurisdiction would be responsible for purchasing upgrades to their own equipment. The city of Omaha did budget for a million dollars for radios. However, none of the other jurisdictions or sheriff or corrections has the money to purchase equipment on their own. So the decision, through all these discussions, was made primarily to budget for sheriff and corrections radios. The sheriff determined that it would be important for a couple of reasons to include rural law enforcement. One, obviously so they could talk to us because they're on the same system. And if they're on, they don't have the same radio as we do, they're not going to be able to talk to us. Two, the bond issue last time failed primarily by voters up west in the rural parts, the uncorporate parts of Douglas County. If we have the support of the rural law enforcement and by extension fire, that's going to make it a heck of a lot easier to sell this bond issue to the people who voted against it last time. Then you have city fire. If we're going to be providing it to the rural fire, then the question is city fire. And there's a couple of aspects of city fire that have to do with equipment and then the stations throughout the city that they put the, put that equipment. So we are going to try to flush this out here. We're going to be meeting Joe and I with city fire in probably early next week. Come up with a number that the county board can vet, probably around forty-seven million dollars, all directly related to the equipment piece for the county as a whole, so everybody can talk to each other. And then I guess the side benefit of that is we have more to do to help us sell the bond issue.
So I guess the question that springs in my mind is, if we're buying radios for the Omaha City Fire Department and Police Department, how are we going to get compensated by the Omaha City of Omaha who are buying them?
What I understand, the trade-off is their support. Well, there's another way.
There's three things.
Or let me say, here, that question, how I would get compensated is that we're going to own that equipment and it's going to be amortized or depreciated over time. And so let's say this is ten years. So the potential deal we can make to them is we'll buy this upfront, but nine-one-one cost, where this is going to be, reimbursed eighty-five percent by the city of Omaha. So we could say, we'll pay for it upfront, but over these ten years, we want you, it's going to be included in the operating cost of nine-one-one, that we want you to reimburse us annually eighty-five percent of that amortization cost over those ten years.
And the second and third aspect of it is, to the extent that we will need staffing in the future, additional staffing, for a variety of reasons, important reasons, we, we want the city to support that because they pay eighty-five percent of the freight. So this is kind of like, all right, we're doing this now, but you're going to have to help us out later. And B, more immediately, we want all hands on deck to sell this bond issue.
Okay. So I understand what you're saying and that holds us harmless financially. This political question, Patrick, frankly, is a separate entire question. We'll have that discussion at a different time. This begs the question of what's the lifespan of these radios?
Ten years, is it that long?
If we don't know, I mean, let's find out.
John, can you help out here?
Five years? Five years, probably, seven, maybe. They get, they get beat up bad.
Last round of radios were.
I'm, I'm talking about the portable radio, not the infrastructure that runs the system, but the portable.
We're talking about Motorola's ability to continue to, to maintain that in their end-of-life, quote-unquote, end-of-life, where we need to upgrade. And that's where we're at right now with end-of-life in two thousand and eighteen for these radios.
Motorola's planned functional obsolescence.
Correct.
In the backing of the federal government.
They will no longer maintain them after that date.
But I think your point, is it seven years? Yeah, I think that's negotiable, what we amortize them over.
Oh, I think that absolutely, multiplier or whatever you want to call it. So we need to have that number, I guess, and the people who supply the equipment should have that number. And then we tailor that so that we are.
This is all kind of new news as of yesterday, so it's, we're working through this now, but we just wanted to bring an update.
But that number then becomes equal to the number that we were going to spend, I mean, seven million was what we were going to spend for radio equipment for just ourselves, right?
Eight point one.
And so this doubles that component in the passage.
Thanks. Mr. Rogers?
I want to bring the polit, political question back again because if it's money, it's politics. And what type of, I'm saying, how are you going to cut this deal? How are we going to cut this deal with them, what's the?
Well, we were thinking of calling a meeting, or I think it's trying to be scheduled, where we want Marty Belik and Steve Curtis, my counterpart, their finance director, and appropriate representative from Omaha Fire Department to kind of sit down and vet this issue with them and feel them out and throw out some ideas to them. So this is all in the very, we haven't had any discussion with them yet.
My, my only thing is, fire is weak right now because they're not going to have a chief. And so you got to model. And so I just want to get an idea of who they're going to bring to this because basically I think now.
The name of the woman they were talking about?
Bates, Melanie Bates, do you know her?
Who works for the mayor but is a.
She used to be a fire.
Right.
Yeah, she worked for.
Where is she going to be at? I don't get the face, but I mean, the, if she doesn't put her face out here, I would not agree to it. She's going to have to get on record for a tax.
I think they will, I mean, they, they've got, this is a good thing.
Nah, I mean, there's a dance, she dance. She, no, I'm just telling you right now, if they're not willing to put full throttle behind that, we should not.
Well, we'll find out. We'll find out if they're not, then we talk about it.
Because, no, I mean, she can't put the chiefs out there. She has to be there with the chiefs.
The mayor?
Yes.
Well, I think so, that's right.
I mean, because if all of us don't come there, it's got to be full throttle.
And I, I said, that's why we're going to have Marty and Steve Curtis, who are both in the mayor's cabinet.
No, I, I, you know, I'm just telling you for, because I think if this thing fails, we, we'll never get another shot.
That's right.
I'm saying, it needs to be seven of us and then her. And, and then bring them. I, I want to look in the face and say, are you in? I don't want to tell you to be a chief, tell me you in.
What else do they have in it besides the radios, anything?
Well, there's the, the stations, there's base stations at seven hospitals around town that equipment goes into that has to do with fire, a lot of emergency medical. And then you have the radios for the fire. And then you have some software for the police. Because the sheriff's software with the radios is going to be such that, that if police want to talk to them, they're going to need an upgrade to the software on the radios that they purchased with their own money. And this is all really technical stuff that Jenny and Mark Conder could speak to better than I can, but that's the kind of gist of it.
So the radios are not compatible, is that the thing?
The radios are compatible, but one, the radios are going to be end-of-life in two thousand and eighteen, just like ours are. The city radios, police are newer, they are compatible, but their software that the sheriff's office is going to be using with the new radios we're going to get, that are of a nature that will not be compatible with the software that the city has.
Well, why don't we get the same software the city has instead of doing this stuff with the sheriff?
Well, that's, that's something that we'll have to talk about there.
Well, I mean, really, come on, this is one of the horrible, this is a big problem between the city and the county. They all want to have their own deal. They all go out to see their own vendors and they do their own deal. And damn it, that's the bullshit, we're not doing that. So tell the sheriff, too bad, I support him on a lot of stuff, but he needs to get his crap together so that his stuff is compatible with the city. Don't expect to send more money that we don't have unless he wants federal forfeiture. Don't spend money we don't have for something that we don't need to do. We don't need to do this. That's my message. Because I'll be, I'll be six to one supporting the bond issue, that kind of crap goes. Sorry to be so mad about it, but this stuff, I've got to have my own sandboxes, coming to an end. See, I take that for other people too. Anybody else?
Yeah, my ass is.
Commissioner Duda, I'm sorry.
Go.
Commissioner Duda?
You have to say your name.
Appreciate it. Well, I just want to say, if we're expecting repayment from the departments, bear in mind, there are seven volunteer fire departments in Douglas County. Some of which are represented by cities, Ralston Valley, Waterloo, Bennington, some are not, Burbington, Pocket Hills. You also have Boyce Town in there, but bear in mind, there are two paid departments here. You've also got Epley. You can't ignore their needs and that is completely separate from Omaha. So there's a, there's nine different departments here that need to be taken into account if we're, if we're looking for them to be a part of agreements or.
That's a good point. Who's making it over that? It's okay. That's all, Mike. Okay, anything else on this subject?
Mike, so, so not only, not only, but I'm assuming you all mean Bennington City Council, Bennington's mayor, Valley's mayor, Valley City Council, all these guys are coming.
Well, they're not going to necessarily come to that meeting. They're, this meeting is with the city fire because that's the big kahuna. Who is part of the nine-one-one users group, they're all going to have to be on board. We're getting, giving them the radios, they're all going to have to champion this bond issue.
Anything else on the bond issue? So like I said, we're going to have these meetings, but it appears that we're moving up, you know, from the forty million to, you know, somewhere in the mid-forties. We don't have a firm number yet, but we're working on it. I think Chris made a really good point. I would like to see these other fire departments brought in, have a, a meeting like you're going to have with the others to get them on the cabinet.
The last thing I've got on this is looking at the history of our bond council. And it strikes me that we need to probably do an R F P for bond council on this. Where are we on selection of bond council?
Why would we do that?
Why not?
What do you mean?
Well, let's, Joe. Well, go ahead. You know, I, I raise, I knew these concerns were coming, so, you know, traditionally, we've talked to there at home. So I went and talked to them and said, hey, you know, there's a lot of pressure here that we absolutely need some pricing concessions on this. And so they went back and came back with a proposal to me that basically two pieces. One piece between now and the general election in November, for all the assistance they give us and working with them, it would cost five thousand dollars. And then assuming it passes in November, they would basically charge us. And then, assuming it passes in November, they would basically charge us a dollar, a dollar per thousand. So, if it were, you know, when we did this, it was gonna be a forty million dollar bond, it would be, cost us forty thousand dollars. And historically, the last few bonds we've done, they've charged us a dollar and a quarter a bond. For comparison purposes, the, on the last bond, they did for the building commission, I think it was closer to two dollars, and the one before that, it was a dollar fifty. The last bond they did for us was a dollar and a quarter, they brought it down to a dollar, so they brought it down twenty percent. And I talked to the finance people over at the city of Omaha, who, as we all know, folks, a lot of debt, and when they do it, they do it for a dollar a bond. So, we're getting what I consider, we have an offer on the table at a pretty competitive rate from them right now.
Well, I don't argue that, it's just compared to what? I mean, if we were doing anything, any proposal for any kind of a contract, why wouldn't we put an RFP out there? I mean, they're not the only bond underwriters in the world.
Well, we shift back and forth on general obligation bonds, we use Baird Home, and on revenue bonds, we use Q-Tech Rock. So, those are the two big guys in town who do it. So, I mean, there might be people, you know, and they probably, within the city of Omaha, they have to have ninety percent of the business, it's kind of a specialized thing. So, that means that if we went out, other people who would do it, and really be confident and have a lot of experience doing it, would probably be out-of-town law firms, and then, you know, that's a question for this board, is you wanna give the business to an out-of-town firm.
That begs the question of, why would we do a no-bid contract on something this big with anyone? It's a no-bid contract if we do it this way.
Could I interject, that with professional services, like architects, engineers, legal services, and this sort of thing, we don't do an RFP, we have, we would sit down and talk to them, and they'd make proposals and so forth, but there is no such thing as an RFP for professional services. And just a side note, when I was in the mayor's office, we used to have a New York bond council, and he was nice enough to take me to lunch in nineteen eighty-two, and the bill was four hundred and fifty dollars for lunch with the two of us. In any event, he was a nice guy, and anything we wanted, we got. And so, I asked her fiddle, how come we don't use Q-Tech Rock any time of the day? Their, their building has a shadow on us and we on them, and I think it's embarrassing. So, I called a guy named John Kavanaugh, who was associated with Q-Tech Rock, and I said, John, we're gonna do business with you, and I'd like you to tell, tell people, so you get the credit for it, which he did, and he did a great job, and so, they were very gracious and glad to be doing the business with the city. Later on, Mike Fahey chose a Kansas City company, I don't know how he chose them, but anyway. So, I, it is, I think it's important, first of all, because we keep the money in town, we've got two really qualified firms, that's kind of what it comes down to, and we're not getting screwed, I think we're being treated very fairly, and I'm particularly happy with what you negotiated, it sounds good. Mr. Borges?
Well, I, I think for this one in particular, because of the work that's been done on it previously, and now to be able to take off right where we are, they're familiar with it, I mean, they would hear the other meeting, they may feel a little more comfortable about where we were going, so with this one, I feel that we should look at it with who we've got, and we've got, we've got a big task ahead of us.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
I, I appreciate the background on this, but I, I guess my question would be, and, you know, we've had people from Baird Home, apparently, over here, I wasn't here for the last finance committee meeting, they charged us in excess of fifteen hundred dollars to come over and talk to us on that occasion. So, it's kind of like your lunch with the guy from New York, except times three.
You're informed.
And, and yeah, it's been a long time ago, so, but they didn't even buy us lunch, I don't think. The, the point is that it would, it would seem to me that something this big, now we're pushing fifty million dollar bond issue, that it would be best practice to just ask the bond community, I mean, and it's robust, I know that there are only two really in Omaha, but to give us bids, why, what would be the downside of doing that? I guess I don't understand, if, if they come back and they're over and above the one that Joe outlined, that Baird Home has outlined for us, okay, but if they don't, I mean...
Well, in my view, that these kinds of companies, this kind of services are not chosen based on money alone. I mean, when you have David Kramer before, chairman of the Nebraska Republican Party in the mix, the contacts he has, all that sort of stuff, the political juice, that's worth something, that you really can't put a price tag on. And I'm not saying there are others in the community like him, but they're well-informed about what we are doing, they were with us when the last one failed, I mean, they understand the whole dynamic of the thing. And I, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna choose somebody that's gonna do it for seventy-five cents instead of a buck, I wouldn't choose it based on money, I'd choose it on their skills, and I, we've got a couple of good ones, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not totally opposed to it, but I just don't know that we'd gain anything, I don't wanna choose somebody based on price.
I mean, I got them to come down twenty percent.
Yeah.
I guess my question, Joe, then, would be, in two thousand and fourteen, when we did pretty much the same package, and they were bond council on that, what did we pay them?
Well, we, we just paid them, you know, I think, ten or twelve thousand dollars, 'cause they didn't actually do the bond underwriting, we just paid them to do everything that was involved in pulling this together, and putting it on the ballot, and making sure we were doing the appropriate filings.
Could you find out if you don't know exactly?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a good question to ask.
Thanks.
I don't dismiss that at all. Anybody else have any comments? Okay.
All right, so, we will move back to the budget now?
I think so.
And we were talking about the, the capital plan, and that's how we kinda got diverted, as we talked about how much of this could be potentially put into bond offering. And so, now, Jeff, I think there's probably some other things you wanna say about the five-year capital plan?
If, I don't wanna wait for everybody to kind of want through it, but the end, or the majority of things in here are mechanical equipment. And, you know, the chiller costs you hundred and six thousand dollars, we just purchased one.
Where are we on this?
I'm just talking.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then, the infrastructure to reroute piping and clean up the piping, and, you know, it, it can be about nine hundred thousand dollar project. So, with us getting six hundred thousand, of course, we have to split years to do a project that size. And if we're not going to pay attention to those, we're going to fall further back than we are now.
And one point to keep in mind, if you finance something with a bond, you have to spend the money within, I'm pretty sure it's eighteen months. You can't, like, raise the money and keep it there for all five of these years, so I think the money has to be spent within eighteen months.
Really? I thought it...
For three years or eighteen?
I don't think...
Yeah, we had a CJ say, there's a timeframe.
There is a timeframe.
That would be a problem on the capital improvement, so...
But with what I'm showing here today, we can survive, as we've been surviving before, but we can pay attention to the big ticket items.
Regarding that, that's, if you sell the bonds, you have to send the money, but you can hold some of the bonds back, can't you?
Well, that's, sometimes people do series A and series B for that reason.
Okay. And would we be doing multiple series A, B, C?
That hasn't been contemplated yet, because, you know, when we were first talking about it, we weren't talking about doing stuff that we weren't gonna do immediately, I, basically, that's just George, and then buying radio equipment. But that's, that's an option, sure, is to do a series A and a series B.
Joe, I've got a question that's really, really off the wall, but what I was talking about with Mary Ann, and Chris DJ's busy with looking at his computer.
You guys leave it.
I know. Comments? I, I'm curious, and this already sounded off the walls, I can't bring it to the floor, but what would we, what would the cost be if we took, if nothing else, a couple of questions, the priorities of this department and financed it with property taxes, or, and/or took a big chunk of our forty million dollars and financed with property taxes, what would that cost? What would, what would happen to the mill levy? I mean, would it have to go up the...
For every ten year, we get how much?
For every, for every penny, what do we get? Is it seventy?
Three million.
Two million?
Three million?
And we capped it at half a year, or one half a year, one half a year.
Three-point-five million.
And you get a half one year and half one year.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're struggling with this stuff, and I mean, the things that they're saying is that these are serious maintenance problems, they've been deferred and all the rest of it. I really think, you know, and I, under these conditions, maybe this is something we have to consider, because I don't think we can float, do everything, and say prayers that this bond issue's gonna pass, and I don't know whether you, how much you benefit from this anyway. How much would you...
The bond?
Yeah, do you benefit?
The only thing we benefit is the correct...
Correct. Yeah, well, I mean, where's this chiller go?
We have them at the house, they're probably...
I mean, no, I mean, you need a whole school of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we ought to seriously consider that, that's the way to back to your head, because that may be the only way we're gonna get this handled.
You know, the whole thing about mechanical equipment and being efficient is control. And some of our buildings, some of the equipment has it, some of it doesn't, some of them tied in, some of them are not, so if we, if we embark on our project, they're tied into the control system, so, and we've had meetings with UNFC, and they got control, one guy watching the controls at all times, you know, we don't have the luxury of doing that barely, and we barely have all our equipment on. So, there's a lot of controls in this, in this year, just because of the software upgrade. So...
Mary Ann just pointed out to me, so, twenty seventeen, the building maintenance project totaled is one-point-eight million. So, I mean, we ought, we ought to consider raising some of that, if not all of it, to property taxes.
I mean, increasing the levy?
Yeah. Cutting extension. Oh, no, I didn't say that.
Was, was the alternative to put it in the bond issue? The one-point-eight?
No.
No.
So, I mean, you know, we've been deferring this stuff all along, and I, I mean, I think we need to discuss it, 'cause I mean, we're gonna do it, I think, you know, discuss it, we're just starting on the budget, so who knows what's gonna happen next?
In the past, the past four or five years, we've been around the six hundred mark of capital improvements. And if we went back to our sheets, from that current year, it's something, the next year is over a million, it's been consistent that way. And I just keep pushing things out first, because there's nothing else we can do.
Yeah.
But we could get caught. That's the danger.
We get caught, then it's out, full.
We push out, we could get caught.
You're talking about what, we hung up these two?
Well, not doing...
You're gonna get caught, it's just not the win.
If it goes down, we're...
You're gonna get caught, is it, you're gonna get caught, is this a match? You're gonna get caught, it's just a fact of win. I mean, if you wanna buy one more year, instead of playing long-term for a budget wise, okay?
Or, you know, you could do a hybrid, is try and put some of it into this bond offering here, to kinda cover us for the next year or two, and then, with the idea that going forward, you know, that might potentially have to be funded by an increase in the tax levy, but we could push that out, to not have it this year.
That's a good idea, I mean, it's a good idea, I mean, if we could put some of this, legitimately put this into the public safety bond issue, we ought to consider it, but I don't think we should do what we did last time, put all our A's in that basket.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I guess I'd go along with Joe, if we could do that and defer a tax increase, I'm not for raising property taxes.
Neither am I.
And if we've got this bond issue, big bond issue going, one-point-eight million is a small percentage of the overall thing, and maybe we should talk some more about that.
Absolutely.
I am, I am against raising the property tax.
I am too.
I am totally.
Well, then, let's look at this as an option.
But I've had to vote for it before, and sometimes it's warranted, so let's keep it all in mind about it. And it doesn't have to be the full amount.
Sure.
I think we ask them to say, okay, what is the absolute priority that you think you need and need to do, and then, give us that figure, and I can't imagine, we can't come, come up with something, maybe. But let's discuss it.
Can I just say?
Commissioner Rogers?
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, look at where this goes. You have to vote, if you were to do this, you have to vote in June, you raise the leads, piss them off, then you're gonna come back in November, and then ask them to do this then. I don't disagree, but you can't act, you can't do the lead thing now. And even if you do it, you can't nip and tuck it, you gotta just cut it off. And I'm just saying, I'm, you know, I voted for them to some degree, but the lineup is not good this year. When you raise it, you're gonna piss the people out west, west you're trying to get, and I don't care who you put in front of them, you're not gonna get them after that.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm not saying that we, you know, I'm saying that we are just starting the budget process, there may be places to cut, to fund this.
Okay, I'm just...
That's really what I'm thinking, more than anything else. But I, you're, you're absolutely right.
Well, the point you were saying, and I'm gonna just tell you, the low-hanging fish is, and if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it this budget year. You start, your, your idea, well, you mentioned that was the thought of it, when you talk about a strategic plan, and you talk about the insurance, retirees can go to the exchange. You don't wanna have to do it, but the fact is, that's two-point-five right there. And if you, if you give them the time to go on the exchange, two-point-five for infrastructure is a big deal, so I'm just saying, if you, before you go there, you gotta, you know, make a hard call, and we're the only one that do retirees.
That's two and a half every year.
That's what I'm saying.
We could have a party for the retirees on the roof, some of them might fall off.
I'm not saying, but I'm saying, no, but I'm saying, I'm saying the atmosphere now, the atmosphere now is, 'cause we're gonna have to do two things, you're not gonna be able to, 'cause two-point-five is now, that's most of the cost, so, pretty much, two years, that's gonna be three-something.
Right.
Yeah.
So, what we're gonna have to raise it, they can go to the exchange. It's not, before, we were talking about cutting off, they didn't have anywhere to go.
That's right.
And there, I don't wanna say when it'll come, but there's gonna be a program nationally, where they're gonna try to pull all these people together, and this is a, a NACO thing that has to be approved, but even if you, even if they went exchange first, and it buys you time for some other stuff, I think you, you have the talk now about the insurance piece, 'cause either way you do it, you raise it or you cut it, they're gonna be fine, and you gotta go with it.
Anybody else on this? Anybody else for property tax increase?
Well, I, I think to, with Chris's point, I mean, if you look at, was if we would take their two thousand and seventeen total of one-point-eight, one thousand eight hundred and nineteen thousand. And then, we talk, even if you, even if you do, it phases, you know, one year, do half, and then, you're, you could make it up like that, what happens? So, I think it's definitely worth pursuing for the conversations.
It's an, an option we can pursue, there's no legal reason that we stop rescinding it.
And Jeff, in the meantime, I think I'd like to ask you, I know that these are all priorities, but some are more priority than other priorities, so if you can really focus on that, and give us a figure that's relatively close, that would help us focus on trying to solve this immediately. Well, not immediately, but for the first year, anyway. Hear your comments, or...
I just wanted to say, Joe, Jerry, and Jeff, good job, you guys do a great job. I've been through a ton of public properties in the last year, a lot of times, with you guys, you take the time and effort to show us, and they appear to be well-maintained, and you got a plan for them going, going forward, good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
There's one other, one question I do wanna ask, it's on my heartburn, it's the location of the election commissioner's office, I see we're replacing the roof, I know it's not that much, but, you know, this building is inadequate, it's poorly located, I mean, it's one that, I mean, even if we're, we're out west in France, there are better locations out there than where it is, because you, you know, people will have to, it takes forty-five minutes to get there by bus, and have to walk across God Street, and all this sort of stuff, it's really a ridiculous location. And I, you know, if we sold the building, we'd have the proceeds to, you know, maybe the cocktail lounge wanna buy it, but the deal is, if we sold the building, and then we'd have some cash, we could do something that was at a hundred and fourteenth and at 114th and Center, which would make a lot more sense. I don't know, just keep your mind open for that too, this is not a good location. Attack, the people who go out there to vote, it's incredibly crummy, no parking, the whole thing's a mess. Put it next to the treasurer's office out on Maple, someplace. Just bringing it up, looking to sell it, Mr. Rogers?
It's going up. If that was to happen, you can't do it till 19, because basically from here until November of 18, they're like on full throttle. So they'll have the primary, the general, the mayor's election off there, so you.
It just gives us more time to correct, correct it. I know what you're saying. Well, Mr. Borgerson?
Well, go ahead, Jerry.
No, the, the good news there on the voting, we've been involved with these ballot boxes.
Yeah.
We're in seven locations.
Seven, eight total.
Total of eight now. So, you know, a lot of people are doing the mail-in. And then they just, they drop it off and, so there's seven locations, so it's kinda like the old days, there's seven branches. You know? So it, I mean, it's, it's encouraging for the people that want to do it.
Very.
And they can't get out of that.
Well, and one of the thing, I mean, you know, we have a list of all of our properties, but it might be worthwhile to, like, quit the election commissioner building, I mean, is it worth continually putting money into that? Or is it worth moving somebody someplace else and then moving them into that building? Which I know takes money, it all takes money.
Yeah.
But are we plugging money continuously into buildings that are high maintenance, that are costing us a lot of money? So, anyway, I just throw that out, but maybe that's another way to look at stuff.
That's, that's remarkable, thank you for saying that.
That building, that building's almost 50 years old out there. 150. The other thing is, the building right to the north of it, I think it'd give three or four years to sell it. And it wasn't, let's see, at the looks, anyways, you'd understand why. But anyway, so let's think about what Mike said.
No, that, that's a good.
And look at other options.
Yeah.
And it would ideally be something near the interstate or certainly Fussins, that's for sure.
Fussins would be more important than the interstate, 'cause then we're having to cross the interstate.
Miller's a great area.
Okay.
Bring out the old market.
Yeah, the old market would be great, there's some space open, I do. Up four walls. The condominium mine will be open for sure. Uh, any other comments or any questions? Let's move on from here, you're gonna do some kind of a sharpening thing and tell us. Whatever's it, and I'm not trying to drag you down, but.
And let's find out how soon we have to use the bond.
Yeah, I'll get the final one.
Because the school, I'm positive, has a long deal on that. Now maybe you could start the job and go through it, 'cause some of their projects are long projects.
Yeah.
No, their timeline is pretty tight. It's, it's pretty. It's pretty tight, they're gonna, they're gonna get it done.
They're gonna spend $500 in a year.
Yeah, I mean, you got, right now, what's out there now with committed, what the, how they got it committed is they got the contingencies, they got the engineering stuff already done, they're doing prep work, some of that money is to buy land, they bought that. That money's gonna flow in three years. This is, this is just. That money's gonna flow. Well, he said, he said you gotta spend it in, in a certain amount of time.
Three years?
I thought it was three, when we.
Yeah, and that's when you said, when you said 18 months, that's.
It might be, three years would be. I knew it was less than five. But I'll tell you, if you get that bond passed, it's not gonna be.
It is not, that is gonna be monumental. That's gonna be monumental.
We need groups like Jeff, help us.
Do you have a turn for spending this?
Uh, it, it's looking good, so they won't need any supplement. They get a little bit of revenue and I think that's from some work you guys do for the city of Omaha.
The city of Omaha.
Uh, and the great majority of their budget is for payroll, as 185,000 of the 250. And with that kind of as intro, now I'll turn it over to Terry to talk about the specifics of the department.
Basically, what our department does is we prep all the documents from city and county. We get it ready for scanning. And from there, the images are scanned, it's sent to an archive writer where we end up creating rolls of film. Some of the departments that don't need to have rolls of film done, they're having their stuff scanned and sent out to file bound. And then we end up processing rolls, we read the rolls to make sure that they meet the state statutes. And then we make a direct doof roll. From there, the direct doof roll goes to the offices. And then a security roll is sent down to Hutchinson, Kansas, to be stored in the salt mines. We also have ended up bringing in a couple of other departments, which is kind of giving us more of a backlog. And then I had a lady that just recently retired and we were down one employee for like two months before I got somebody hired. And that has put us back a little bit further. So what I am requesting for my budget is to hire an additional person to help get the backlog brought back up to.
Go ahead.
Back up to, you know, so we can get, as things are coming in, we can get it out just as fast.
Mark, any questions?
Are we being compensated adequately by the city of Omaha? And when I ask that question, I mean, including the benefits that our employees get.
Yes. For, for the services that we do for them, it is just, the filming that, or the scanning that's done for the city of Omaha is, I have a project that I do for Councilman Grenat and then for permits and inspections. Outside of that, the other revenue that I, that comes in is for the storage costs that we have down in Hutchinson from back in the 70s.
Hudson, Kansas?
Huh?
Hudson, Kansas?
Hutchinson, Kansas, in the salt mines.
You've never been in the salt mines?
So, do you, can, can we, can you do what you need to do by just giving you money for tentative work instead of putting somebody on long-term?
We could probably work something.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is it a six month, a year, just to get caught up and then see where we're at?
Yeah, just to see where we're at. I mean, if we can't, you know, if I can't do like a full-time for a while, I, we could try and see how it would work with a part-time employee. How, yeah, how things would work on that aspect.
Mr. Friend?
Thank you, John Friend, for the record, clerk of the district court. Hopefully, I am a valued customer of our, of our imaging service down here. And here's the other side of this whole thing on the imaging deal. Every entity that produces any government paperwork is assigned a records retention schedule. All the court stuff is on record retention schedule, eight from the state secretary of state's office, records management division. And all of my stuff is permanent record, which means I can never get rid of it. Lots of people, like county courts, two years, 'cause it's more turn and burn, 18 months. Our stuff is forever. And we literally have a half of a football field on sea level downstairs, which now is full. And we're struggling to try to get that stuff imaged and on microfilm. And so we've been working really hard and I gotta tell you, they do an outstanding job, they have outstanding customer service. I've been down there, I've seen the operation, it's very effective, it's very efficient. I would strongly, strongly recommend that you put a full-time person down there that we can control and put to this, because I don't think at this stage of the game, she'll ever actually catch up. But there could be an acceptable limit of, of being two months behind, three months behind. I have years and years of work to be done. And I'm just getting to the point to where I'm starting to move boxes out, until the court goes paperless sometime within our working lifetime. If that happens, it'll cure a lot of this problem. But even the records that I have down there, a half of a football field stacked to the ceiling of the sea level that has to be imaged and put on microfilm, or I have to keep the record. Here's an issue, rains, storms, floods down there, I'm still responsible to keep those records. And I'd rather have them either on file bound, here's another issue. You put that on file bound, right now, currently, revenue-wise, I think I get, it's a, it's a pit, it's 1,200 a month, maybe, 1,400 a month. With title companies and certain, some of the larger attorneys, firms, that pay me to go in and get the small archive pieces that I have that's currently in file bounds, like 87 and like 94. And they pay to go in there and get the stuff so they don't have to send a runner down to the courthouse to do that. Imagine the revenue that we could sell if I was able to put that on file bound, at least pay the storage cost of file bound, if not, make revenue off of it, with a lot of people that wouldn't even have to come down. 80, remember this date, April 13th of 06, 08, everything's on justice, all images. Before that, from 08, April 18th, 08, back to the 80s when we started imaging, it should all be on file bound. Now, can't be public, because there's a lot of issues, as all the attorneys would know, all the old stuff, it's got social security numbers, financial document accounts, financial numbers that probably shouldn't be public. But there could be certain groups of folks that we could generate revenue off of, that we could vet and give them a password to file pound and do that. So she does need, her, her capacities weigh out script the, the need for that service, it's a critical function, I think it needs to happen.
Let me ask you a question, when you talk about revenue, do, do you have the ability to charge now, is it so small?
Yes, I am, but it's very small.
Okay, so you're saying we need to go to the legislature and say, make it more?
No.
What you saying?
Because they don't have anything on justice that's previous to 2008. Why?
Who sets the fees?
Uh, I do.
Oh, why can't you raise them?
I can, I did, went from 100 to 125, it's not worth it, I had 20 people, now I got 12. Because they figured it out that there's not that much on there. But the more I put on there, the more I can generate, the more I can sell it. Sell the process of Q-Tac rock not having to come across the street or bear at home or whatever. They give two or three passwords to their clerks, they can get on there and scrape off anything they want. Trusted folks.
Let me ask, somebody can answer this question, what is the basis of using this kind of material? I mean, when was this law written that says it has to be on file bound, is that what it's called?
Well, it's a durable medium definition the state puts out. Currently, the durable medium definition is you either have to have the paper available for anybody to see, or it's gotta be on microfilm, because, you know, you used to have five and a half inch floppies, then you went to three and a half inch. Now you're thumb drive, now, you know, you can put it on remote servers and, and they're are coming up with a durable medium definition, which would allow us to use file bound, that's got instant failover. They got a place in, in, I think it's Lincoln or Denver, and they have a place here. So if the place burns down here, we immediately switch over to the place in Denver and all of our stuff's up and running, we lose nothing.
Well, I am the most un-computer person in the building. But what about the cloud, I mean, what is the deal? Are we lagging behind in technology? I understand what, I understand what you're saying about hard copy. Surely, this would be a better approach then, and wouldn't it be a lot quicker if we used the cloud instead of all this microfilming stuff?
We actually had a few deals since I've been on the board about changing that, but that, the method of microfilming versus tapes or CDs or whatever. And the legislature has always X-nayed that, because long-term, they know microfilm is.
Long-term storage.
Forever and ever and ever.
If it, if the microfilm is stored right.
Right.
Your microfilm will last for, for at least 150 years. So like, if, let's say, well, I can tell you right now, I got a call from, uh, youth center, Brad. From Brad, and I had to recall a couple of rolls of film from Hutchinson that, that a judge needed information from Nico Jenkins. Now needless to say, I ended up printing off a nice two reams of paper.
Now, let me ask you a question, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, that that worked and all the rest of it, but surely that would work with the cloud?
I think it will, and I think that'll enhance as we go along, but right now, I just don't know if, it's gotta go somewhere. It's gotta go to some box, somewhere that is retrievable, I'm sure it is in the cloud, but the cloud hooks to a box anyway.
Well, I mean, the thing is, I don't know anything about how you get it on the cloud, but it seems like it'd be a hell of a lot easier than all this.
Cloud, cloud, nothing but a room full of service.
Sorry?
Cloud, nothing but a room full of service, they just, it's not housed with you.
Right.
But I'm just saying, I mean, it seems like it'd be a heck of a lot better way to do this than microfilm. When was this law written, you know, 1918 or something, you know?
If you talk to the folks that actually are, are really savvy, this technology changes so fast. That they have to come up with a definition that accepts all these new changes and make sure that you can stay up with the changes. Like if we put it all on a three and a half inch floppy, there's no computers, even take a three and a half inch floppy anymore, it'd be worthless. You'd have a cost associated with updating all that into the new thumb drive or whatever else is coming next to your watch, whatever.
So in other words, you use old, old answers so that nothing changes.
Exactly.
Wow.
Yeah, 'cause as far as.
We have to have a reader too now.
They haven't, they haven't said anything.
Does, does Google microfilm, do you know? Just kidding. Okay, well, that's fine, I understand what you're saying, I, I just think it's, I've always been blown away by this technology that seems pretty, pretty far gone. Mary Ann?
I can, I'll you.
Well, I was gonna, did you ask your question, you know, about the use of?
No, I thought maybe that, but I'm not sure when she said needing a full-time person and what Dave said too. I thought about interns possibly.
I mean, just to get us caught up, I mean.
Well, right now, like I said, right now, we are at least two months behind on titles for motor vehicle. I am three years behind on the health center.
And that's not even talking about my stuff.
And that, and that's not even talking about John's stuff with the jury.
I know, but what does that mean? How, how long does it take for you to get caught up with a year's work?
Well, that's just it, you know, you have, I have, right now, I have six pallets down from the youth center. It'll take me at least a month to go through and organize all their stuff, because they just throw things. Then we have to go through and we have to take the staples out, we've gotta check on all their quotas, huh?
We need to throw them.
There's some departments that are better.
They just take, yeah, they just take a bunch of stuff and put it into a box.
Yeah, 'cause we, you go.
I've got it covered.
Now, like, for John, he, he has a department that they, they sort their documents. So then when they bring us over boxes, we can just sit down and we can just start scanning it. But a majority of the departments that we deal with, we have to prep all their documents. And that's what takes so long, is having somebody to sit, pull staples, make sure that.
Patrick's gonna straighten that out.
I will hope to the extent that it's.
Going back to what I said, and Mary Ann can comment, wouldn't interns help? And we get that far behind, not only do you need the full-time, you need some of these interns, we oughta be able to get that from Metro, UNO or somewhere. You'd think. Pulling out staples, I can even do that with mine.
We can set up a schedule. Noon every Tuesday.
Is there any, any, any way to increase your revenue, I mean, these departments that, and I know that it takes a, probably, you know, if you ask the youth center to contribute to, you know, $500 for a big box or something, I mean, I don't know where they get it, but.
Well, the way that the department was set up back in the 70s, and the way that it has been run ever since then, we were just a facility to work for the county.
Right.
You know, so we do not charge any county offices. The city, we've always charged, and as things have gotten, you know.
Well, it does make sense, but I just wonder whether, maybe Joe, if you could explore, you got lots to do, but anyway, if you could explore a possibility of some kind of a fee schedule from the departments that produce, you know, like Mr. Friends and others, Alexander's and others, to produce all these volumes, that maybe there's some way they could add a, a dino or something.
That's just taking the county money from one pocket to the other.
No, no, we're charging, charging users. You know, I always said, like, when I was actively practicing law, I mean, if you, I don't know what it was to file a lawsuit, $28 or something, I started one. Now, I don't know, was it 180 or something? You could make it 182, and I'd have to pay it if I went to sue somebody.
You basically turned to the state legislature, just like us paying for policies.
And I know, you get involved with, you know, these retirement plans and they go. I'm just saying that if, if I, as a user of your office, if I wanna do something, I have to pay. And unless it's $60,000 to file a lawsuit, somewhere between what you're charging and 60,000, there's a tolerance level there. And someplace we need to find users, users to pay.
Than making the county attorney charge than every department.
Well, that's what the attorney general does, he doesn't really practice.
Wow.
Okay, Mark, were you done, Mary Ann?
Well, I'll probably head, Mark is not.
No, 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 I was.
Going back many years, you might remember when corporations and I believe the city of Omaha gave people a plug-in unit you put into the copier, so your department would be charged per copier. So that's essentially what Mike is saying, that the fee gets charged back to the person using it. So we want your department to subsidize the rest of the county by paying for her.
So you have a big sale to finance that, okay? Mary Ann?
Well, I think going back again, that there, there could be potential to use interns for certain parts. There also could be, yeah, I mean, these departments, if you're providing a service to them, then they should be providing their stuff in an orderly fashion. And if they don't. And if they don't, theirs goes sits over there and gets waited until it's done. It shouldn't be your responsibility. So Patrick needs to buck up and make sure that you're getting your stuff in an orderly way. Wait, is he still here? Oh, I thought...
I was thinking, I'm thinking about...
He's shaking his head, yes.
Maybe in the corner, I believe.
So Patrick...
I'm not a big fan of the intern, intern thing, because this is prep work. You know, I don't know what kind, I don't know how much of, from the educational aspect, you know, you bring an intern in to, you know, set any type of office where you're doing something that they learn about government, where, versus somebody coming in and they're taking staples out and they're sorting stuff. I don't see, I don't see the University of Nebraska...
You've never worked in a political campaign, obviously.
You know what? I have.
Well, my point is, is that if there is a way, instead of adding someone full-time at this point, to get caught up so we can see exactly where we are then, and again, if the Youth Center has to come over and organize their stuff, then get somebody from the Youth Center over there to organize their stuff.
That should happen before it leaves the...
Well, it should, but it didn't, so now...
Well, yeah, like I said, normally, when I've gone through, like, for the Youth Center and stuff, I will start, you know, in with their detainee files, and the files aren't in alphabetical order. They might have manuals, or they'll have strip searches in there. So you've gotta pull all that stuff out, you know, reorganize it, so we know exactly what project that that's actually gonna fall under, so they have some rhyme or reason of how their stuff is.
Why couldn't, in just a thought, Patrick, Brad Alexander, maybe a Mark Fong Saul, maybe not, they could possibly look at who might be able to help as trustees, and it'd be something they'd wanna do. Now, you'd have to figure out what you have them do, but it seems like it's good for them and good for us.
Confidential information, that's probably all I have.
Okay, we have two more questions left.
My stuff's full of confidential stuff.
Yeah.
I was gonna bring out the confidential.
Okay, you're through. Uh, excuse me.
Somebody knocked me out.
Question, discussion's done.
All right.
I talked too much.
Yes.
Let's go to the easy one. I'll say the third and final one of the day. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So you're gonna give up two employees?
Yes.
Make things work out for us? Is that what I heard?
You know what, how about this, I'll just give up mine. So I never have to do this again.
You're done, good.
Carrie, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Claire, could you grab me some water, please?
Nina, just so you know, after our county board meeting, I didn't see him yet. We got him. Hey, this looks good. He might say that's the truth.
Yes, I hear you, yes. We're gonna hold him to that. Yeah.
Okay, your budget looks to be right on schedule.
Thank you.
I haven't seen it yet.
All right, so real quick, we'll, last, we'll do extension. They have eleven budget employees.
Eleven?
Eleven county employees. The current modified budget is four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. She's about seventy-one percent spent, it's seventy-one point five percent of the year, so she's kinda right on, not expecting a supplement. The only revenue that this gets is the payment in the interlocal from Sarpy County, which is about sixty-eight thousand, and her payroll is about four hundred thousand, so it's the majority of her budget. And I'll turn it over to Nina now to talk about it, with the hope that nowhere in this discussion will we talk about deep frying a turkey.
Oh, my God.
I wonder what kind of grass is put in the shade, though?
I know why I'm the last, because it's like the grand finale, although Nina made print, so I did not need to bring my boxing gloves, we're gonna be good.
And she does take kickboxing.
Oh, my God.
Anyway, so thank you very much, everybody. I am gonna show a quick little video that just kind of sums up what Extension is and does, and who we were and who we are today, because I know there's been some mis知 words about that, so. With that in mind, let's hope this helps, please. There we go.
Cool.
Mention the University of Nebraska Extension office to most people, and their thoughts turn to rural scenes, row crops, and farm animals. And in many parts of the state, that's still a big part of what Extension does. But here, in Douglas and Sarpy Counties, it's a bit different. Traditional farms are replaced by neighborhoods, schools, businesses, playgrounds and parks, acreages, strip malls, and even favorite restaurants. As the strategy changes, your Douglas and Sarpy County Extension remains your best resource for research-based information, programming, and support. Extension in the city can be seen in everything we do, for people, schools, businesses, government agencies, and community organizations. As a matter of fact, people are surprised to learn all the things we do. But you shouldn't be. It's the reason Extension exists, here and across the country. In fact, back in eighteen sixty-two, when President Abraham Lincoln signed the Morrill Act to create land-grant colleges like the University of Nebraska, it included more to provide education and research. There needed to be a way to share that knowledge by Extension. The same holds true today. Here, you'll find agreed professionals, experts and educators who understand how to share their specialized knowledge in ways that do the most good in our community. They're providing research-based information in the areas that impact our community most: environment, food, families, youth, and 4-H. We're helping backyard farmers diagnose problems with plants, preparing master gardeners, protecting groundwater, and certifying commercial applicators for safe pesticide use. We're strengthening families through programs that target those most at risk with information about food and nutrition, budgeting, communication, and relationships. We're contributing to healthy eating and food safety, from how food is grown and sold, prepared, served, and preserved. Even our 4-H programs are everything you'd expect in an urban setting, in the classroom, after-school, and in clubs throughout the metro. We're working on science topics, instilling leadership, promoting entrepreneurship, and teaching new skills to young people. Extension in the city is for everyone, and we make sure all are welcome to take part as volunteers and donors, as participants in our programs, as partners in our efforts, and as users of the resources we provide. Come be a part of what makes Extension in the city an important part of our community.
So, as you see, one thing that's happening throughout the country, so there's three thousand seven hundred counties in the United States, and Extension is serving every one of those counties.
Three thousand sixty-nine.
Three thousand sixty-nine, okay. Thank you, Chris. He is on the Extension board, he's very well-put.
It was close.
Yes, it was close. And so Extension is serving all of those counties. But one thing that we've recognized in metropolitan areas is the fact that we are very different from the rest of the state, and so there's a consortium nationally called Nebraska, or National Urban Leaders Extension, really looking at what are the targets and what are the focus for metropolitan areas? Because oftentimes, we'll think of Extension as it being cows and crops, and it is that, but it's so much more, especially in a metropolitan area. So you asked us to come up with a mission statement, or what our mission statement was. Ours is helping Nebraskas enhance their lives through unbiased, research-based information. What that means, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I think a lot of times, people don't get the fact that if you go somewhere and you want some, say, even Google, you have to really scroll and look at all the fine print and see who's sponsoring the website or the ad or whatever, to see, is it really unbiased? And so I have a couple of situations where, you know, there was supposed to be an ash tree removed in my yard. I work for the Extension office, but I'm not an expert in trees and grass, but I thought I had to remove this ash tree because Emerald Bashwater was coming. So, got a quote about all that. Well, I had somebody come up to my house, and they said, what ash tree? So they came there to remove the ash tree. They said, what ash tree did you want moved? I'm like, well, that one out front is the only one that is, like, growing and good. And they said, well, that's not an ash tree, that's maple. So these are commercial vendors that are out there, you know, so, I'm not saying that's true all the time, but that's what research-based, unbiased information means. It means that we have nothing to sell, other than the truth. And so when people come to us, they confess that they're finished with that. In terms of what we do at our place, we have three different departments. So we have 4-H Youth Development, we have Nutrition, Food and Health, and then we have Community Environment. And just to highlight a couple of these, you guys can hook your hand up if you want. Basically, in 4-H, we have around twelve hundred volunteers, those volunteers run clubs, they are, we do a lot of train the trainers and the school enrichment programs. In Food, Nutrition, and Health, probably a big piece of our work is with the USDA. So anybody that receives SNAP benefits or food stamps, we work with those families in the stores, in their homes, in the schools, after-school clubs, working with the children on learning how they can prepare their own nutritious snacks, but also working with the parents on how they can budget. And going to the grocery store, and where do they find, if you look on a lower shelves, there's more bulk down there, and it's not brand name, and it's cheaper, but it's just as nutritious. And so teaching families how to make the most out of their food stamp dollars. We've also created an app where it has all the farmer's markets on the app. It also has the foods that are nutrition, and the recipes that you can make with those foods that are in season at the farmer's markets. And Chris has referenced a couple of times, the Growing Foods Connection, which is a technical assistant brand, that Extension and New York City Pods are heading up the Steering Committee. But with that program, then we are looking at other ways we can tie all the food systems together, so it goes from production to harvest to the table. And then in Community Environment, just a couple of little facts, we have two hundred and forty-four volunteers there. We certify their hours, so we track that. They've given about nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty hours back to the community, and if you take that times the volunteer rate of pay, it's about three hundred and eighty-six thousand back into the community. Working with community gardens, they raised ten thousand pounds of produce, and then donated all that produce to the homeless shelters, so that they have fresh food and nutritious food. So this is kind of a highlight of the three main departments in our office. You guys asked for an org chart, it's in your handout, and it's up here.
That's pretty simple.
It's very simple. It's very simple.
Color codes are...
So the cool thing about it is, and it, so it can be hard and it can be complicated, or it can be easy, and the only way it's easy is if we all work together. So it's pretty cool that across the United States, we have federal, state, and county partnerships. And if we all work together, and so to Commissioner Boyle's point earlier, around not everybody wanting their own sandbox, if we all play together, we can create so much more synergy and get so much more impact for our residents. And that's really what, what I would hope to accomplish as we move into this together. So you guys are the blue, that's who you pay for, that's your eleven. And then, as you see in your color codes, the red's university, we have the federal partners are purple, but basically, you're paying for eleven people in the blue, and yet you get the rainbow. So that's what we all give, we all come together and work together, and I would hope to keep that moving. One thing that we've done this year is, we said, especially in an urban population, we wanna work with issues, so three to five years, what are the issues, what are relevant, what's multidisciplinary, and what do we need to do in terms of getting partner involvement? So through stakeholder and employee surveys that we've sent out, we've captured eighteen issues that we've asked each of our educators and assistants to be on one or three, one, two or three issue teams, because what our idea is, we don't wanna keep doing what you've always done, because it may not even be done anymore, but we wanna do what's relevant and important that's also in our wheelhouse. And so we are letting the educators and assistants kind of self-select around the issues that they find most passionate and most important in their lives, because we know that they will produce more that way. And we've asked for partner and stakeholder involvement in these, so we're asking for commercial people, government people, city people, eccentrically a part of these teams, so that we can address it from a three-sixty degree view, and not just from a state view. And these, I'm not gonna go through all those accomplishments, I just gave you some readings to do in case you're bored or need entertainment, or inspired, but you guys can read through that. They're just goals and accomplishments that we've kind of highlighted throughout the year and where we wanna go, so I'll say just a couple of them. In 4-H, right now, in our urban area, we reach one to every five youth, and so the goal moving next year is to get one in four youth. We have, we were selected as one of three cities across the United States to partner with Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and Girls, Inc. The reason that Omaha was selected was because Extension and Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, Girls, Inc., they all have good track records, so they did kind of a private study on each of these organizations. And then they said, okay, well, these are the four organizations that we're gonna work with, because they follow through, they answer to the grants, they have good collaborations, good networks. And so then they went and chose cities of where they had the strongest relationships and connections and cooperations. And so Orange County, California, was one of them, Dallas, Texas was the other one, and Omaha, Nebraska was the next. And so far, in Omaha, we've reached more youth than Orange County and Dallas, Texas. And it's really, again, because of collaborations and partnerships, and that was funded out by the Noyes Foundation. Yep?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So the grant, the five hundred thousand dollars is for?
For the, so we got a STEM mobile, and, you know, Boys and Girls Club are the financier, the fiscal agents for that money, but it provided for the staff that we had to hire and train, STEM mobile, so we take science, like, we went down to the projects with the STEM mobile lab, pulled it right up there, and had the kids come in and do science and that type of stuff right there, make chemistry and do robots and engineering stuff right in the projects, so. In terms of nutrition and health, I talked a little bit about that earlier, but when we talk about reading, reaching the marginalized populations, our statistics are this, so we get twenty-four percent that are a hundred and one to a hundred and eighty-five percent below the federal poverty level. Fourteen percent of our clientele are sixty, seventy-six to a hundred percent below the poverty level, and you can read that. But one of the big parts of this program is to really work with kids and their parents, because we know that when the kids learn, there's likelihood that there could be sustainability in the home. But where the kids are at is the parents that usually come, but we do try to really target only those that are the most marginalized, and that's where most of our federal employees are housed at. And that's what they work with, it's just the food stamp, USDA dollars. And then in the environment and health, we have entomology, we have water, we have horticulture in that department. Again, I talked about the hours of certified volunteer hours. Something really interesting, I was gonna take a picture of our parking lot when I left today, but I didn't, it was just full of commercial vendors, and they were parking down the street, because they have to come to our place to get certified in order to spray, do the pesticide. One thing that Kent Holm talked about earlier was just about teaching people how to use and reuse their compost, their lawn clippings, not to overspray because it goes into the water system. That's, that's a large, large part of what we do every day, helping people be sustainable, but on a very low budget, and also, you know, kind of minimizing, simplifying things so that they're not hurting the environment. So we're doing some other stuff, we're gonna start doing a lot of online education, so battling with the bedbugs on a budget. A lot of people, like Omaha Housing Authority, we work with them, a lot of, they have a lot of bedbug situations, so our entomologists is working with them and creating curriculum for them and their residents, so that they can understand how bedbugs work on a budget and try to get rid of them. Just some more facts that you can read. Real quick, so you know, so each educator and assistants, there's roughly thirty-five of them, they have to be in part of those issue-based reviews. They have to get their own goals and objectives for each of those issue-based reviews, and they have to report to them at the end of the year with a career builder guide and an activity insight. But for me, as a department, like, what do I wanna see as my department? These are the three things I'm really focused on. I wanna switch our teams from action teams that focus... I want to switch our teams from action teams that focus on traditional issues or emerging issues, but I want them to be on issues. So I want them to identify it, they have to change the logic model so it can be done by April fifteenth, and then they need to have their programs up and running, ready to go by September. So the big push, and this is going across statewide, but we want ours in the metro, so we have Washington, Dodge, we have a lot of those regional educators that can come in and partner, so if we're missing adventures, they can come in and fill that gap. Advisory and advocacy, as you, some of you know from the Constitution bylaw meeting that I had, had held, I really want our board to go from kind of a working board, still be working, always do more with less, so they have to work, and they need to be advisory and advocacy. So we want to, I've paired an educator with each board member, and I want them to create their own advisory committees, so get out into the community and bring in stakeholders, so that we're kind of knowing what the beat and the pulse is of the city, so that we're meeting the, the right issues and needs. And then volunteerism is something we do a lot of, we believe in it, it gives back to people, and they give back to the community, and it's a win-win. So we want to really work on teaching and training our volunteers. A lot of times, they love to come there because they're passionate about whatever they're volunteering in, but we want them to be educated and to be able to teach and outreach to those that they're meeting, so. And you can read details specific on those goals, if you want, in your handout. So here's the money. Just to kind of give you an idea, I, I want to really kind of point something out. So you guys, when I came on board, we were getting about one point seven, one point eight million from UNL, the state, NIFPA, federal dollars. We're almost now, you know, a couple of years later, getting almost two million from them. And I say that to say that it's a match, and so whatever dollar county's putting in, they're getting two dollars back. Now, do you get that in your general fund, and you get that in your budget? No, you get Sarpy County's payment of about seventy-five thousand dollars. But this does come in to the benefit of the community, the residents, and everything that we're able to do together, and I think that can just continue to build and grow. I believe this year, the state was going to bring in about three other assistants that we could have in, and Dave?
Tina, just to, just to edit your comment, when you started, it was one point two million dollars, not one point seven.
Oh, I was looking at the...
So it went from one point two, to next year, you're asking for almost two million dollars for you and your group from the university. Worth clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, I was looking at the notebook, thank you, Dave. So, and then in terms of what we are looking at and asking for, as Joe said, we are on target on budget, not going to be asking for anything more. This is kind of what it's going to look like for the Douglas County, ask is about four hundred and forty-nine thousand. That's a flat budget, one point five percent on top of the salary. We operate really on forty thousand dollars in terms of operating expenses, how do we do that? We charge the departments for everything, so they, all their copies, all their paper, all their office supplies, they have to produce that, and they have to come up with that on their own. It's something that comes out of tax funds. So, because we can charge a reasonable rate, and so the reasonable rate, we can justify saying, has to pay professional development, has to pay operating costs for your department. So that's how we, that's how we operate from that place. So, and then Sarpy County will be in roughly around seventy-five this year, and so that's its, that is what, that looks like in a nutshell, so any questions or thoughts?
Scott, huh? Um, if your youth development component here, as a father of a couple of OPS kids, and esteemed kids, too, could you expand a little more on what your participation in OPS is?
Absolutely. So currently, we're in sixty-six schools. We have met with, as you know, Kine Science Center, that sort of stuff, kind of looking at what all they have. Well, and Dave, you can chime in on this, too, because you've been a part of these conversations. We have recently met with Ken Spillman, and he is the career coordinator for OPS, so they were surprised at how much we were involved and how much we were doing for their school system. He, at that level, didn't know. So we are in strategic conversations now of how we can get our curriculum into all of the OPS school systems around science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and agriculture. And so we have a good partnership with Omaha Bryan High School with their agricultural program, bringing in entrepreneur professor from Lincoln to help them, their kids learn and grow the food, here's how you can sell it, here's how you make a product, all the way from getting consultants in there with our, with our work staff, to say, here's how you build a greenhouse in the most efficient manner. So, does that help?
The other thing, I referenced the conversation we had this morning on yard waste, and education going forward, to try to get people to understand that they're throwing away good stuff that could be improving their lawn, rather than bagging it and putting it in our landfill. That educational effort, are you involved in that?
We are, so we have the twelve community gardens throughout the, the city, and so those are demonstration gardens.
I was trying to read the map behind you.
So we specifically have those demonstration gardens for that purpose, and that's, again, when I said we want to teach our volunteers, we want our volunteers to be teaching people that are going through that, how to do that, and do I think there needs to be more partnership between environment and us? We do partner quite a lot. I think all county and city places, I don't think that we all know what, who's doing what, and I think we need to get to the table, and that everybody needs to have, what are you good at? And then that's the part we do, what we're good at is, we teach really well, we get concepts across, so we do help, we teach.
As far as outreach goes, and this is in my district, so I'm sensitive to it, the birthday celebration is coming up next month, you participate in that?
Yes, yep, we have master gardeners there, we have our horst staff there, I'm not sure what all they've got planned, but yes, we do that.
Thanks, you do great, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Ann's been texting, so maybe you want to get caught up in something?
Yes, I do. I would like to tell you all, it's a legislative...
No, it's a legislative matter.
I'll tell you.
You're doing a really good job. Thank you. You've been very proactive.
I was going to do this to you, but I don't, I won't do it.
Okay, you think you're finding it. Okay. That's, that's the nicest thing that I've ever...
I know it, I know it. You've done a great job making graphs, another world commissioner's interview. Yeah. I think that's it, kids, we're going to adjourn, anybody have any questions, comments, or anything else?
No, but I do, I just want, since everybody's here, we talked about LBD eight ninety-four, and the debate has ended, and it's moved, it's moved on to E and R for the second stage, but what there was, was an amendment, and they, and we talked about the juvenile court and the importance of, of a attorney for every child, that's only now in the population of one hundred and fifty thousand or more, so.
Aren't we special?
Aren't we special? That's right.
Thank you, everybody.